Approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Lake Forest MHC LLC. Approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials KF. Item seven, human resources. Approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Eight, county auditor, receive county recorder's report of fees collected. And nine, secondary roads, approve the underground utility permit for the city of Sioux City.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Radig, second by Monson. Any questions on the consent agenda?
One question.
Sir?
Where does the money collected by the recorder go?
It's general basic fund.
The what?
General, basic.
Okay, very good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Well, see, item ten, deputy commissioner of election, Mr. Hoffmeyer. Canvas of Little Sioux, inter-county drainage district trustee election.
So Mark, how many drainage districts do we have in our county? Because we always have all these trustee elections going on.
Nine, but some of those are inter-counties.
Right.
They're across the border into the mountain. We have nine where it's controlled.
Okay.
There's three others that are private trustees.
Okay.
And then the ones across county lines.
You could almost be making these drainage districts up and we wouldn't even know.
Yeah, how are you doing? Oh, you got them?
No.
Trustee?
What's that?
Down to the lowest, also. Not really doing it.
We could probably move on to your item if the chair sees fit.
I'm sorry?
You want to move on to eleven A while we're waiting for them?
As long as that doesn't bother the auditor, his office. All right, item eleven, secondary roads. Approve the contract with HGM Associates for the design of the new Correctionville Road Bridge.
Mark Marrow, Woodbury County engineer. First item was for consultant contract. The bridge on Correctionville Road, just east of Charles Avenue is a bridge that's on a curved alignment. This is not a standard design for us. There are a couple of firms that are experienced with designing this type of a bridge. It really wouldn't be effective to change the alignment of the road in this case. We have houses just on either side. There really isn't a lot of room to work. We need to thread the needle right where it's at, so. I'm, in reviewing this project, we've determined we ought to stay with a curved alignment. And again, that requires the design of a curved bridge. Last time we used Calhoun Burns and Associates for design work for our K-46 bridge over the Little Sioux River. HGM is another good design firm that has a good deal of experience working with Woodbury County. And I recommend using them for this project. I recommend the board approve the contract for consultant design of the Correctionville Road Bridge.
I will move that.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. Any other questions for Mark?
This is a 2023 project, but because it takes a long lead time wise to get these projects kicked out and ready for letting, we need to get started now.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Award eleven B, award the bid for projects pairing one-three-nine, pairing one-four-one, and one-two-four to the lowest bidder.
We had a letting at DOT last Tuesday. Most of the board members were here when we signed a 2080 agreement with Lyon County for the administration of a bundled bridge program. Part of getting competitive highway bridge program money is that we let these bridges in bundles, groups of two or more. We were bundled by, with Lyon County when we submitted the grant. We're the project administrator for that construction work in Lyon County. Low bid for the project was Dixon Construction. Total project cost for all three was $2,049,0249.70. It came in under estimate and we recommend award.
Move it. Second?
Motion by Monson, second by Radig. Any other questions for Mark? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Now that you've approved the bids, I can tell you that there were two bidders on the project. Second bid was $2,522,418. That was Graves. So we did get a very good bid from our local contractor Dixon on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, where are we at with Mr. Commissioner of Election? Okay. All right. Well, then for the moment, all we have left is reports on committee meetings.
Not that it's really a committee meeting, but Mr. DeWitt and I did have a planning meeting, I'd say, with IT, just so the board's aware on looking into options to improve the supervisor and user experience with the IT setup, audio/video wise and calling in and all of that. Right now, we have what we call a black box that handles recording. We have one or two people handling phones and we've encountered problems when there's been more than two people wanting to call in and participate in a meeting. Obviously, with the way things are, we need to have an open line of availability for people that want to participate. But also, we don't want someone to just call in and, as we used to have, just as soon as you call the number, you're just speaking over the speakers instantly. So we're looking into something that ideally would interface with something like Zoom in order to give one operator the ability to handle a lot of different functions and also automate some other functions, one of them being when people call in to participate, that they would, you know, join in a mode to just listen. And there'd be options for them to participate and whether it's during the citizen concern sections or during an agenda item, we can make that easily available, but also control the flow of speaking that way.
We talked about changing batteries on the fly as well, I think.
Yeah, just like Mr. Chairman is just doing right now. Is that what you just did?
Eight seconds.
Yeah, one of those, one of those issues is, of course, these lapel mics. They scratch and some supervisors take them in other places when we take breaks. So we're looking into, you know, having stationed better quality microphones as well since a lot of the feedback I know I've gotten is that the audio quality's not that great and especially when you're calling in, it's not that great. So that will be improved and we'll come back with some improvements.
And hopefully bring it in for under 1,400 bucks, right, Mr. Malloy? Yep, all right. Mr. Radig?
Nothing.
Anything? Mr. Monson, have you got any committee assignments yet?
Probably needles.
We'll be talking about that. Round two of citizen concerns.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, William Burrows, 4409 47th Street.
Okay.
I just had, had one question for you, sir. My question is this. How come you did not give public notice to fill the vacancy for Supervisor Taylor's position when you gave, you're giving six weeks' public notice to fill positions on the Woodbury County Commission to Assess Damage?
Well, to my knowledge, we're not required to post for the job for the replacement. The Committee to Assess Damages is a, is something that's required by the sitting, the senior judge, I guess, of Woodbury County or this district. That's been several, four panels that haven't been fully staffed for quite some time. We've been struggling to get them filled and that's a continual work in progress.
I asked Mr. Widman this question and he referred me to Google to get the answer to the section of the Iowa code that necessitates this mission. Do any of the other board members have any other insight into the statutory requirement?
Just that he has to live within the district that he's appointed from.
And Mr. Burrows, this is Mr. Widman. We've had several conversations on the phone over the last couple of weeks. And as I indicated to you, I'm not in a position to give you legal advice. And so legal questions that you would have, you know, either you need to find a way to get that information from other sources or seek a private attorney, but the function of the county attorney's office is not to provide legal advice to members of the public.
Who could advise the citizens on a question like this? I don't see this as a... What, all I'm really asking is what's the authority? And what hap, and how come you gave public notice on this and not other matters?
And I think Mr. DeWitt already answered that as far as there's no requirement for filling a supervisor vacancy as far as public notice or a timeline for that.
Other than the public notice that was given.
Which was?
Posting, posting it on Thursday and approving it on Tuesday.
Consider that a public notice?
That's the public notice that's required by law. It has to be posted a minimum of 24 hours before the meeting starts and we're doing that in the neighborhood of 72 hours or so.
So how come you're giving six weeks' notice on this other matter?
Because nobody's applied for it.
I'm sorry?
I don't think, have we had anyone even apply for it?
Not yet.
Nobody's applied for it.
And if I had the ability, I would appoint somebody to it, but I don't think we have that. That is not my, that is not under my jurisdiction or anybody from the board as far as that goes. We have to advertise for it and hopefully get some volunteers or some people that want to fill some positions and I can't make somebody take that spot.
And that's really all that I was asking for, to fill Jeremy's position, that you used the same process.
Mr. Widman, did we do anything improper or illegal or?
Not that I'm aware of. I think we've been through this at the prior meeting. I'm comfortable with the procedure that the board took in filling it. Certainly, there's other views on how that could have been done, but there was nothing improper about the path that we've taken or Mr. Munson has now been sworn in and properly seated as a temporary member of the Board of Supervisors.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns?
I believe we do have Steve available now to talk about the issue.
I see that. Why don't we finish up with board concerns and then?
I was slightly concerned. I thought Dennis had earrings on there. I couldn't tell.
No board concerns? All right, Mr. Hoffmeyer.
He's right there.
But I've got some more drainage district elections here. The first one is the Little Sioux Inter-County Drainage District election. So we'll need to have you guys receive this and then sign on this sheet for Woodbury County. That would be the 10A.
That was your biggest vote getter right there. Ten votes. There was 10 votes, right?
Yes, this one had 10 for Wayne McClure.
By this, the sheet I've got in front of me, does it look, there's three lines for signatures?
Yes.
And we have five. Is that going to matter?
Not that I'm aware of, I guess. I would just, I guess, have three of you sign then. At least that's a majority of the board.
Okay. So what do you need then? A motion to receive?
Yes.
I will move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig.
Was that just 10A too?
Yeah, that's just eight.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Next one is, you got the official sign? Okay. Canvas of Sand Hill Lakeport Drainage District.
Okay. And that's the same one, just have it here to receive and to sign.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Final C, Canvas of McCandless, Inter-County Drainage District trustee election.
I'll, I'll move to receive. With the seven votes.
Yeah.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
You got the last one, Mr. Radig?
Right here. Think he gave me that too.
Thanks, sir. All right, we are on to budget review discussion for FY 2022. Item 15A, Board of Supervisors, comm center, page five and six.
This is another supervisor section, five, six. And this is the number we started with. I don't know if there's any adjustments to this number or not. Glenn can fill us in if maybe you meant.
I'm the communications director. The communications in our budget, total budget for city and county is $2,000,416,389 and less the revenue that we receive from our tower lease from North Sioux and Sargeant Bluff and some miscellaneous, amount of $276,709. Net communications budget is $2,139,680. County's portion of that is 30.2% under the 2080 agreement, which is $646,183.45.
Any questions for Glenn?
You're the liaison, right?
I'm sorry?
Are you the liaison?
Yes.
Yeah, commission.
Yep. I guess anything from you on how things are going?
Nope. Well-run department, so I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig. Final questions for Glenn on the comm center? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Star Comm Program, 36 and 37.
Representing Star Comm, this budget was adopted at the last Star Comm Executive Board meeting. The total budget, less revenue, we have $122,335 in revenue that we received from tower rent, some fiber optic leases. So the total budget less the revenue was $318,754.92. The county's responsible for 23% of that, in the amount of $73,313.63.
I'll move to receive that.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. And of course, that was quite the rousing public hearing on that one. That was quite the rousing public hearing on this budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why?
There wasn't.
Oh. So is tower space getting a little short?
Pardon me?
Tower space?
We do rent tower space on some of the towers.
Is it getting tight?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we've been, we've got some 15-year leases on some of our towers from AT&amp;T and Fiber Comm and Sioux City Schools. Yeah, we bring in revenue from AT&amp;T at $71,460.
It sounds like they're putting up a whole nother series of towers for this 5G stuff. Is that true?
Well, we put in, Star Comm owns five towers and that's all we own. And then Woodbury County, Gary's department owned the tower down by Danbury, but those are the only towers that the county owns.
We got a motion or a second on that, didn't we? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. WCICC, 18 to 30.
Supervisor, how are you?
I'm good. Another shot to pick on you.
Don't waste any time. What you have for you is two elements, the operating budget and the capital budget. The operating budget, we do have an adjustment downwards for the allocation. It should be about $1,367,606.80. So it's above $50,000 now.
And I think you talked to us about that. Why, why was that again?
Michelle dug into that and when we created the estimate, the city does not have their balance, doesn't have their final numbers and we found the basic discrepancy in the health, healthcare line item. So there was about 50, 51,000 in that item. There was a couple of other smaller ones that offset each other, but that was, that's the brunt of it.
Okay.
And I did speak with Dennis here in the past week about that as well. CIP budget, our primary item of interest is enterprise storage. Typically, we have, city and county has a $300,000 allocation each year. It's $250,000 this year and half of that is typically county's responsibility, so $125,000. Again, that'll be for enterprise storage. There are two optional CIP items in the budget, one for telco handsets and one for outsourcing or for the county website. Back in the last, I don't know, 10, 10, 15 years ago, we hosted about 30 internal websites throughout the county and the city and we're down to six. So it makes sense to outsource that. That's the county's image in a lot of fronts. So it'd be our recommendation to do that. The city went through a similar process here three, four years ago, so I used, used that number for them. Again, you guys can all go through that. We can keep on the way we are. I am losing my primary web resource here this summer, so that, that's sort of hastening the urgency of maybe doing something different. But we'd have to figure out a support mechanism to manage the website, the content of the website. Right now, it's sort of a mishmash of different entities. And the county's set up different than the city with elected officials. So I know the city manager's office has a resource in his office, his communications person that manages all the content for that site. So again, food for thought. You guys can, you guys can ponder that if that makes sense going forward. Again, we can limp along, but again, I am losing my primary resource here in the last six to eight months. So again.
So if we want something changed on our website?
We can make minor changes. We should be able to, I am cross-training another individual to do that, so we should be able to manage that if there's a major change. And again, in my estimation, the website is tired. It needs a refresh. It's seven or eight years old and it should be updated. But again, that's your call. Any other questions?
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Ung for the WCICC portion of the budget. Any other questions for Mr. Malloy, sir?
Just need to put in a reduction of 50,000 from the original.
Yes. Motion to receive minus 50,000.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome.
Did you get that, Michelle?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Here's a fun one. Woodbury County landfill. More interesting than one would think.
Yeah, right. The landfill, they do have a board out there, I think. Are you on that, Rocky?
I was. I put Mr. Rad on it.
Okay. To explain why there is an increase in the contract, it is allowed to have a 3% increase on the per capita for actual landfill contracts, so that is embedded in that $248,000. Also, last year, which took effect this current year, the landfill board voted to delete the rent they were paying because they were having some financial operational costs that were not good, so they wanted to leave the payment to the landfill. So what we agreed to, we did it per capita on all of the existing cities and town, or townships involved in the landfill. So we took the total population, divided into 35,000 and the township share, which we levy, was 25,258. That is paid to the landfill budget. And then the towns, they, you know, pay their own per capita. And they're all paying right up. And a landfill, Bill has, as my understanding, Bill has sold the landfill or the sale's pending, so we'll have new operators. But I guess they're honoring all the existing contractors. so we'll have new operators. But I guess they're honoring all the existing contracts for the time being.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Leonard's been good.
Yes, he has. So what does a motion need to be, Dennis? We're, we're sitting good as is?
Yeah, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five seventy-eight as in the original budget here.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig. Any other questions for Dennis or landfill committee? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Twenty-twenty-two, CIP program.
Okay, this, we did put an insert into your budget. I did add one item called the fiber optics, new law enforcement center fiber optics installation. So if you want, we can go through these. What we have done in the past year or two, that we, the board looks at these, they're aware of what people are requesting, but the actual approval of each item comes during the budget year. So, we don't borrow the money for the projects we do during twenty-one, twenty-two until May, which is then put on the next year's tax rolls. So basically, we can go through twenty if you'd like, or, and then you're just receiving them, and then you approve them individually like we're doing now this year. Because every year, this thing is a floating, somewhat a floating target, but things that come up during the year. We've had, you know, the one big issue this year was the one million dollars we had to spend for our HVAC for the courthouse. That was not planned for. But that's why we don't approve, because we just do them as they come up. Then we borrow pretty much exactly what we need. So does the board want to go through all these, or?
Any consensus?
I think it would be a good idea.
Okay. The first one is the new law enforcement center fiber optics installation. What this is, is bringing the fiber from where it currently exists, I think along Highway seventy-five up to the law enforcement center. That is one of our deals that we said we'd probably do because FiberCom, through their blessing, feels there's enough revenue they could generate, they'd help share the cost. That's still up in the air, but we need to just plan on it. Like I say, we're just receiving this as an estimate. The next one is Browns Lake Road Replacement, which is a road replacement on a beach concession building at Browns Lake. This comes up to eight hundred and, eight hundred thousand. In this particular case here, it's going to be handled in a way a road was done up to the nature center for three hundred thousand, where they will finance this through their conservation reserve. So on this particular CIP improvement, it'll be handled through non-tax revenue. Conservation Reserve will probably do a ten-year loan on this like we did on the other one, unless they feel they can pay it off faster over five years. The interest rate now on our CIPs potentially could be about a percent and a half. It's just the bottom dropped out because they're only five-year loan. Where with our bond issue for the jail, it's twenty years, so it's higher interest rate.
Well, when we looked through that timeline, it was like seven years or shorter was under a percent. When you hit eight years, it was like one point oh two percent.
Yeah.
And then after that, it started climbing and getting to the point where it was...
They're doing a project now, it's the time to do it, coming up, while the interest rates are just incredibly low. And when we bid these out, we always bid them out through the treasures off, they get all the bids from the various banks, so usually we get pretty good rates.
So Rocky, is that you guys up there, your security station making that, or?
For what now?
That noise, you didn't hear?
Oh, no.
Oh, that screech, yeah.
I could hear it.
That's why we need new audio, video.
So, that is one you'll come back to the board on. You know, we may want to come back to the board earlier than July first, but this will be a non-tax issue. So, the next one will be, two pages later, will be the Little Sioux Road Park Replacement. That's six hundred and fifty thousand. And I think he has talked with the county engineer on this Little Sioux Park Road Replacement.
Hi, assisting with plans.
Yeah, assisting. This will be a tax generation here for that particular road.
This uses tax revenue, you're saying?
It'll be general obligation bond capital loan though, where we'll tax countywide for it.
Okay. Well, now, why is this one, if it's, is it in the park, or?
It's in the park, and then there's the approach.
Okay.
Okay, the next one, to face it back, you come up with a ground, he has in his budget four-year plan on this particular one, where, for the current new year coming up, be a vehicle replacement number two oh five, then it goes on down through the various four years there. Like I say again, these are just to make you aware of what's there. Board officially asked approval, and we'll probably do those after July first. So it'll mix it in with this current year's CIP.
What page is that one on?
That is right behind the conservation. There's a four-year plan there where you got, you got a truck, a cardiac monitor, replace the truck, and tuck pointing for a four-year span. It's that one there. They should have been in order there.
Oh, and this?
Yeah, these sheets here. They're in your board pack.
Oh, oh, okay. I'll go back, I'll, I'll open that up then.
So for the first year, it'd be sixty thousand for truck. Next one is David Lizer. He's had this in, I think, two or three years now, sixth floor lobby entrance double security doors for twenty thousand.
Is this, is this his office, or is this the judge's office? Because there's at least...
Right at the front door.
Okay.
You know, the sixth floor, where you come, like the county attorney's offices. The board will have to determine, is there really a need for that or not?
I'm not seeing the need for it personally.
Yeah.
Got in there, again, they have to come back to the board to ask for, for approval after July first. This is just making aware of what they want. Then up in District Health, they'd like to have the front window replacement. And again, we agreed two years ago when District Health had their fund balances, we reduced our fund balance from twenty-two to twenty percent with the stipulation that we do the CIP projects, because Woodbury County is the owner of that building. They rent it from us, eighty thousand a year. So they're requesting a forty thousand dollars for the window replacement. For the skylight replacement, they're asking seven thousand for the, then that's it for District Health. Now we get back to WCICC, and John just talked about that. That's the county website retrofit, seventy-five thousand next year. And reoccurring IT infrastructure project, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Used to be a hundred and fifty, but they reduced it down to a hundred and twenty-five. This is a match by the city of Sioux City. So it's two fifty divided by two. Before, it's three hundred divided by two. So they did reduce that for one year by twenty-five thousand. And then to replace the county telephone handsets, that's thirty-six thousand. Again, they'll come back after the first year and, you know, make their case for it, and you go from there. But this just gives you an idea of what's in there. If it was suggested by one supervisor to try to hold our CIPs at four hundred thousand, that is virtually impossible. Because all you need is one project in this courthouse, or the LEC or Trosper White, like we had here, that's a million-dollar item we didn't plan for. So that's why it's good. We do it the way we do it, approve them as they come during the year, and borrow the money in May, and levy the tax the following year. That way we catch everything. And I did budget a million eight this current year to put in our debt schedule. So far, it's kind of a million five thirty-six, so we got about two hundred and fifty thousand playroom for any projects might come up between now and May. So if we don't come up with them, we'll reduce that bond down by two hundred and fifty thousand, reduce appropriate rate each year. So there might be a tax reduction on our debt service there, but we don't know yet because we still got four months to go. But after May, anything comes up then, it's going to have to wait till next fiscal year because we borrow money in May.
Nothing is impossible. Nothing is impossible.
Like what?
That one's pretty close.
What's that?
You said it's impossible to keep it at four hundred thousand?
It's pretty hard to do.
It's not impossible.
Well, it's not impossible, but all you need is one HVAC system down, beyond my expectation. But it's possible, but that's, you got enough here. It's about a million, million two. So, but like I said, you approve them as we go along. So that's all we have there for the CIP program.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig.
Do we want to just take anything out right now, like the security doors, or?
I'd be happy taking the security doors out. I just don't see the need. It's not a highly contentious office up there. I don't, and among other things, if there's, one judge is sitting up there, and I think there's only one judge that sits up there, and he's semi-retired, but... Do you want to amend the motion for that?
Well, yeah, I'd move to just remove that from, for now.
I'll move to receive minus the twenty thousand for the security doors on sixth floor. Did you second that one?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Any other questions on the CIP budget? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Item fifteen C, Wage Plan Employees.
Okay, on this item here, we budgeted two point seven five percent. The comm board went across the board, two point seven five percent. Our unions are two point seven five percent, so we're keeping everything constant. So that's what's in the budget. That's our recommendation, approve two point seven five percent for wage plan employees. We should choose all your department heads and individuals who are actually wage plan people. And you adding comments?
I was just going to say, all, all three asked me, or two point seven five this year. So with, I think deputies are at three, and secondary roads is at two point two five with other things negotiated. So two point seven five is pretty much the number across the board, so.
I'll move to receive, two point seven five.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Mr. Sheen, did you have anything you wanted to say, or, okay?
No, I just, we had a FTO meeting, so I'm off.
We'd much rather see you right up close than personal.
Sure.
We need to hit you on YouTube.
Yeah, yes, that's what I need, is YouTube time. Uh, no, I just apologize for being late. We had an FTO meeting that ran a little long out at Prairie Hills, and each of us that normally come and sit during the, the county supervisors' meeting were at the meeting, so, I was the quickest, so, that's, I was just here for...
You're forgiven this time.
Just to be here, I appreciate that.
All right, nope. Um, yes, sir.
For next week, I have two or three items. If any supervisor would like another item, revisit it next week, that'd be great. Let me know, I'll get it on agenda. The one we have is the election clerk. That'll be up next week, and I think there's two others.
Okay.
Not new positions, other things to come back to.
Do you foresee any reason to start the meeting at three-thirty like we have been, or is four-thirty adequate?
I would say four-thirty is adequate.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
I do have a question for Dennis.
Yes.
You gave us a handout of budget highlights.
Yes.
And my question is on the use of the second payment from the CARES Act totaling, you know, the five hundred and sixty-ish thousand dollars we got, and these were divvied up into the different funds. My question is, with the action we took previously to lower the rates in general basic, general sup, and rural basic, do these deposits lower that even more in those funds so that we can potentially transfer some of that savings to debt service?
Uh, that's a possibility, yes. Right now, we put the first payment in reserves. We didn't use any of that money. And then the second payment, I suggest we put in reserves where the board can come back and look at, you know, use possibly some of this. But this is probably one-time shots here, so we gotta be a little careful how we do it. The tax asking's in our three funds are restricted to two percent without having a supermajority vote for it. We've kind of tried to leave the tax rate the same there because you want to reduce our tax base in those three funds because that's what's used next year for our two percent. So we kept the tax rate the same, that's on the sheet here, for the general basic, general sup, rural basic. We're under two percent on all, so we still have to have our hearing March ninth, but that hearing only takes a simple majority to prove the tax asking at that point. We cannot go higher after that point. We always go lower.
Okay, so the fact that these were added to the different reserves doesn't impact the tax rates?
No, no, they're sitting there for one-time expenses.
Okay.
And to give you an idea, the one-time expense, we chose to pay off the, in fact, today you approved the last payment on our training center out the, that will be paid off. We'll send it tomorrow overnight, and they'll do the transfer title with the Woodbury County Supervisors. And there's other things that could come up, and we've always said, you know, told different departments, District Health, possibly secondary roads, if they don't get their total minimum levy. Medical examiner, some we cut, possibly we might have to dig into reserves if they can prove to the board they need the money. And there might be other one-time expenses come up too. But reserves could be used for, like you say, tax reduction, debt service, which won't affect our base, or we just hold on to the money with COVID still running, running pretty good, I guess.
Could you get us an updated figures on the reserve percentages for all the funds next week?
Yeah.
That include this?
Because that's an estimate toward the end of the year, which will include this. So I think in, you know, without an audit done on it, our general basic would be right around nineteen, twenty percent for this additive here. Because you gotta remember, this five hundred and, or six hundred and seventy-three thousand was accrued in our report for last year. This is unexpected money, so we might be up to eighteen and a half, nineteen percent in general basic. In general sup, we're at eleven percent, which is very low. So putting this money in the reserves there actually gets us back up closer to what we should be.
Sure, but just to have the, as accurate numbers as we can.
Yep.
That was my question. Any final thoughts?
Like I say, if anybody has any suggestions that want to be put on there for review next week, we can put them on, and I pretty much put the budget packet together. And then the following week, we prove it, and I get into the papers, publish, meet our deadlines for our March ninth meeting. If, if you go ahead with the sale of farm, we can adjust that right up to probably the middle of May, June first, you know, something comes across. They'll reduce the tax asking over probably two years, both years, like we've done with the gaming and the home fund.
Have you made any progress with PJ on that?
I have not. He was, I talked to him, I think, last Thursday. He wasn't, not going to be able to visit with me again until probably today or tomorrow, and I didn't hear from him today. So I'll contact him tomorrow or try to, and see where we get, because I, as I understand it, we don't want to wait too much longer to make a decision.
Well.
One way or the other, so. All right, other than Matthew and I have a meeting with the county assessor board at six, meeting next week at four-thirty, we are adjourned.
Well, I was gonna go. What if Matthew wants to go, it's fine.
Actually, all of us used to go.
It's posted, so we can all go.
However, I'm not going. Pardon me?
How was it to be back up here?
It was fun.
Look at his face.
Do you mind if I just ask you a couple of questions on camera before you head out?
Sure. Can you do it right here? Do we have a garbage can anywhere? Oh, clear over there.
First board meeting, they get all the work upstairs.
I think just about all of us.
Kansas City.
Well, what are you doing on Sunday?
Working. Watching TV from a distance. So I'll have David to film me and my mom, I'm sure.
But see, you're a Chiefs fan, right?
Oh, yeah.
I just talked to you. I already know my station. Your best team is the everyone. They'll have it all.
See, you have, you have teams on every wall, but not on the couple, I guess. They're never on KTV, they're always on every wall. And so I'll pick all the time, KTV, because maybe we'd have to be watching all the other stations. So I'll make sure it's the one right in front of me.
And Mark, what's your history with the local supervisors?
History?
So what's it like to be back in the championship? And for anybody in your district that aren't familiar with me, what would you consider bringing to the team?
Uh, on the district, lots and lots of people. I was on the board and, uh, just built this and all the rest of it together. Yeah, that's, uh, this is not too special to me.
Anything else you think he should know?
Yes.
That's all?
That's it.
Thank you so much. I try to be, I don't know, it's a painful question to ask.